Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizen concerns? Not on the agenda? If not, I would move to item three. I would like to make some adjustments. I would like to move thirteen B up right after the agenda approval, which is the resolution. And I would like to move number twelve up right after that. Mr. Headed has another agreement.
Mr. Chair, would you be willing to move up thirteen A as well?
Yes, that'd be a very good idea.
I would move approval of the agenda dated May twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Okay. Going to item number thirteen B. Mr. Taylor?
Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as you know, we have some very exciting news from the city of Sioux City. And wanted to read a resolution that I believe we can all embrace and would ask that the mayor approach the podium. I'll read this and then I'll have our chairman present this if it's so moved. It reads this, "Whereas the city of Sioux City recently landed the largest economic development project in Sioux City history with two major pork producers, Seaboard Food and Triumph Foods, pledging to invest $264 million in a new plant that initially will employ 1,100 workers and generating a significant amount of revenue within Woodbury County. Whereas the city of Sioux City is the largest city in Woodbury County with over eighty-two thousand of Woodbury County's hundred-two-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-one residents, and such a project will have tremendous benefit on the opportunities, including the real potential to enhance the quality of life. And whereas the city of Sioux City has recently been designated a homebase Iowa community in support of hiring job-seeking veterans and is only the second Iowa city to receive such designation. And whereas the city of Sioux City and Woodbury County have recently, through a spirit of mutual cooperation, collaboratively met on joint volume purchases, service contracts for elevators, or roof replacement program, bidding lists, emergency services, now be it resolved that the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors congratulates and thanks with sincere appreciation the city council of Sioux City for its economic development and military services efforts and looks forward to the spirit of cooperation and collaborative effort in order to improve the quality of life in our community."
I would take a motion to approve this resolution.
Move to approve the resolution.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Please sign.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. We've been working on this project for about seven months, which really isn't all that terribly long for the size and the magnitude of the project. And I think the good news is that for every job in that particular plant, there'll be probably one to one-and-a-half indirect jobs of equal pay or probably equal or greater pay. So I think it's a good deal for the community of Sioux City. I think it'll be a good deal for the county and I think it'll be a really good deal for not only our taxpayers, but our rate payers for water and sewer because they will, when the plant opens, will become the largest water and sewer user as well in the community. So we're excited about it. We were excited about the two companies. We think they do have a commitment to our community as shown by their willingness to fund United Way and school foundations and those sort of things. So, and they're doing that out of revenue, not out of anything else, and they've committed to that. So, and they signed a minimum assessment agreement, which we think is fair to them and fair to us to start. With very little improvements we have to do, maybe a sewer line and a rice grant for the rest of it, but we're excited about it. So, thank you. The bad news is we're out of land, so we probably will be talking to you folks about how we might be able to partner in some land down in the south bridge area. So, thank you for acknowledging, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second, Mayor. We're gonna present this to you and then take it right back. Congratulations.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate it.
We need a resolution number and we need a frame.
All right.
We might bring it over next Monday.
That'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, now, Mr. Headed. Where did he go? Mike, you're up.
I'm up already.
Well, you said you had to go. This, oh, wait a minute, we gotta do, I'm sorry. Thirteen A, we're gonna do first. Jeremy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. This is just an information request item on CF Industries, the routing of employees by the sheriff and other entities. As a public safety concern, it touches economic development and fiscal responsibility. As we were on our county roads tour, we heard that there were some improvements as far as the secondary roads. Headed shared, Mark Nara, as far as no accidents to report.
I'm sorry, but we have a set time at four thirty-five.
And with that, we have a set time, so I will continue later.
All right, going back to Board Administration, Public bidder, Karen James. Public hearing for sale of property parcel seven-nine-zero-seven-four-zero. Hearing is open. Hearing, no one to speak for or against. Take a motion.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Now, is there anyone to bid on this property? Please come forward, state your name, address.
I'm Ronald Cockburn, forty-twenty-one-hundred-eightieth Street, Correctional, Iowa. I have property next to this easement. I'd like to make the minimum bid of one-oh-nine on it.
I went out there and I had a hard time finding it.
Pretty small.
Anyone else to bid?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one, I move the bid of Mr. Cockburn be accepted?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Young lady right over there will take your money. Now, we don't have enough time for CF here either, do we? All right, two-thirty-nine. I'm gonna go with the set time public hearing for amendment to current county budget, Dennis Butler.
Okay, we have our public hearing now for our budget amendment number two. We did one in, I believe, in December. We do the second one to clean up anything that came up through the year, such as grants. We did insurance holiday, so it won't take long to go through this. The total budget amendment is one million five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-six dollars. The first one, I'll go right through in order here. The first one is taking money away from departments for the one-month health insurance. That way it goes back into reserves, which we use next year to offset some tax askings there in a general basic fund. On the Hitta grant, that's the overtime, we have to budget for the insurance because we have to pay that. Also, seventy-four thirteen is a motor vehicle lease, it's all funded by a grant. The sheriff LEC facility, the overtime, they want to increase their overtime in jail by sixty-three-thousand-five-hundred. When I looked at expenditures, that's just about what's gonna prorate out too. They need the swearing safety apparel because they have a turnover quite a bit in the jail staff. Also, household supplies, they've had an increase of that because of medical, things like that. It's being funded by billing the prisoners. This is increased over and above what they budgeted, twelve thousand room and board, it's thirty thousand over. More money, gun permits, it's six thousand over. And then they have extra money in Patrol Division in the general basic fund, so we're moving thirty-five thousand from Patrol Division over to the overtime to cover that.
Dennis? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can I ask a question right now? So, it is appropriate, it is permissible, I guess, to move money from one department division to another one?
Yes. If it's ten percent, ten thousand or ten percent, whichever is greater, you can do it just by a board motion. In this case, we include it as part of the budget amendment. But you can move from department to department, as long as it's in the same service area.
Okay.
So, say in this case, it's all in public safety.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Board expense, that's an increase in family, ten thousand, that has come from reserves. Public bidder, that is because we've had a lot of land sales, our publications, our professional services, such as abstract fees, lawyers, whatever we need there is up, that's covered by public bidder sales, which, you know, has been up because we've had some pretty good sales, obviously. Central mail, that is up because on the civil processing, they had changed the law where you had to send every hearing by certified, every garnishment or whatever it was, by certified mail. Now, they do increase their fees, so that is covered by increasing sheriff's fees. That will decrease the lifers because they did change the law where they are not required to do this all the time. General supplemental, insurance holiday, that is again reduction in everybody's budgets for the insurance holiday, one month. That's putting forty-four thousand-one-fifty back in reserves. Rural basic, that's insurance holiday there, three different departments are affected, that's putting fifteen thousand-three-sixty-five back into reserves. Secondary roads, he has several increases there for box culverts, pipe culverts, granular, new equipment and signs. That basically is covering the FEMA and that's really from the floods we had in two thousand fourteen. In the buildings, Conservation Administration, they're doing more projects than our CIP projects for conservation, that's funded by conservation reserves. They, we don't borrow for that part of it, they furnish that through reserves. Courthouse, in the courthouse, there's a hundred-ten thousand. An LEC building, three-hundred-four-thousand-eight-ninety-five, Prairie Hills, ten thousand dollars. Those are projects that we carry over from previous years. We didn't budget for them because we didn't know at the point in time, so we always clean it up by this way of putting them in there. They're all covered by cash carryover reserves that are put in from previous loans that we didn't spend it, we're spending it now. We get the Conservation Reserve Fund, that against land acquisition buildings, that is covered by their Conservation Reserve cash reserves, which they collect in Conservation, that's where our park fees go into this fund specifically for improvements or land purchases. It's no tax dollars. Comes a grand total of one million five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-six dollars. Asking to have that approved?
Denny?
Yes.
On the, number one, insurance holiday, what is tax allocation?
That is district health. We fund district health.
All right, that's district health.
Yes. What we fund there is just the parts that's covered by tax, that's just lab, environmental, sanitary and administration.
Okay.
Any other questions? Take a motion.
You have to close the hearing. The public hearing is open.
I'm sorry.
Move to close the public hearing.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Now, take a motion to pass the budget amendment.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
I have the official form here for the chair to sign and then for the county auditor sign, secretary of board. Thank you.
We are up against another time.
We have a couple of minutes. Could you do the minutes and pay the bills, please?
Okay. I would go back to the beginning. Need approval of minutes of May nineteenth?
Move approval of the minutes dated May nineteen, two thousand fifteen.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Approval of the claims.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
I do have to say they're easy to review anymore. Need a motion? Okay, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pat, are you good?
Yes.
All right, we are at four forty-five. This is item eight A, which is receive and consider bids to replace Bridge X dash one-oh-one, the three-hundred-and-twenty-fifth Street Bridge in section twenty-nine of Liston Township near Danbury.
First off, I have to say I made a clerical error. This is actually Bridge P-two-sixty, which you set the letting date for. I pulled the one, wrong one in the description.
We should have recognized that.
It was advertised correctly, however. It was just in my haste to get the board package out, I followed up with the description. So, you'll see X-one-oh-one again next week when we approve plans for letting in June. So, that's where I had made my error.
How many bids?
We have three. We'll begin with Christiansen Brothers Contractors of Cherokee, Iowa. They did include the proper proposal guarantee. Total bid price for the project, four-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Four-oh-three-eight-seven-four-twenty-five, or is that seventy-five? Twenty-five. The next one is from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. Also with the appropriate proposal guarantee. Breathing a little easier after this one. Three, three-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-sixty-six-oh-six.
Getting closer.
Yep. I sure don't like to win the bid. The next item that we have is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville. This project, by the way, just for your memory, is on Grundy Avenue. It's just south and west of Climbing Hill. They also have the appropriate bid bond. And their bid is three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Three-five-five, three-five-five.
Take a motion to send these back to the county engineer for study?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. There you go.
Thank you.
We'll bring you back. Now, CF, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As I was saying before, we had approved for a period of one month in order to mitigate potential issues, budget with the sheriff's department employing overtime deputies in order to help route traffic. And a discussion, I think, should ensue to gauge metrics to see is this, is this working? We heard from the county engineer that there were no accidents since that period. And I've heard anecdotal evidence that things are moving, which is good. But I wanted to, for the pleasure of the board and for our information, to hear how things were going and to ask the sheriff, budget analyst, county engineer, and someone from CF to maybe give us an update from each one's perspective. I understand that the sheriff's department is at Officer Orozco's funeral today. And so, they may not be represented, but just thought I'd open that up for any discussion or entity that wished to, wished to present.
CF, Mark?
Jim Usky, Senior Project Manager, CF Industries. We instituted the program, as you mentioned, Jim, about a month ago. First few days, we did a little experimentation. Everyone was turning to the right when they came across two-fortieth and up to Andrews Extension, across two-thirty-fifth and south on Port Neal. That generated some angst in the rank and file of the workers. And after speaking with the sheriff, Nick and Kim managed to let them make a choice as to proceeding up Allison if they wanted to come into the city by the South Bridge adjacent to the airport route or turn to the right on the previous designated route and go out to two-thirty-fifth, Port Neal and south, and then around to either take twenty-nine or seventy-five or go south if they live south.
Jim, excuse me, but could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. Sorry. The traffic leaving the site is moving smooth. We've worked hard on getting our times down to exit the site to about thirty minutes, which with twenty-three-hundred people on the site is probably about as fast as we can do it. It's being emptied similar to emptying a concert or a stadium aisle by aisle. We try to, I'm not gonna speak for Jimmy, but they swap the aisles around so that the people can't guess who's gonna be the luckiest each day. That sits well with some folks, not so well with others. But I think the program from a standpoint of controlling the traffic is a success and I certainly appreciate the sheriff and the county board's help with it.
So, I understand you're staggering some shifts and also made some changes to the speed limit within the parking lot areas that...
Inside the confines of the site, the speed limit's been increased to twenty miles an hour to our guard gate in thirty-five miles an hour, which matches the speed limit on Allison and on two-forty and Andrews outside the gate. So, the vehicles can accelerate to exit speed immediately past the guard check.
I talked to the sheriff last week, Thursday or Friday or whenever, and he said that he thought it was going very well. They, I think, are using less deputies per shift. They have eliminated one of the intersections. They're well under budget for the thirty-day concept, so we might get more than thirty days out of that money. He's pretty pleased.
And, Mr. Taylor, to come back to your point, yes, we have initiated the night shift. The day shift works normal hours from seven to five-thirty. The night shift reports at six and is leaving the site at six-thirty. So, that also keeps the number of personnel working in the daytime down.
It sounds like there's a kind of a three-fold, three legs of the stool, to use a lack of a better metaphor. And you would say all three are helping, that the sheriff's deputy's presence there, routing them without having to stop and stop, is...
Fairly appreciated. And the deputy that, and again, I don't wanna speak for the sheriff, but they had posted a deputy at the intersection of South Bridge and two-twenty-fifth. And it turns out that they decided that if the people wanted to turn left to go over to Port Neal Road and go down to two-thirty-fifth and come in, or if they preferred to go down two-twenty-fifth and turn left on Allison and come in, they let the people make their own choice.
And then my last question, then I'll stop and then let others ask. What would you say is the duration of time that it would be necessary at the level of employment that you're currently utilizing in order to continue at this pace? In other words, is this something that is necessary through July, October, November? What's sort of the tapering off, so to speak, where, you know, just because we went through a budget process and we understand that there's, you know, a need, a public safety need, and also an economic development impact, but we're also in the business of planning, as I'm sure you are, so...
We'll be in excess of two thousand personnel through November.
Through November?
Yes, ma'am.
Mark, you had some opinions on that. Would you like to speak to those?
I think a lot of credit for the success has to go with Todd Wick, who's been the deputy who's been heading this up out there. You know, I think CF improving or increasing their speed limits for the exiting staff too helps make a difference. My concern with this is long-term, I think you need to be looking at keeping the deputy in place, at the very least at the intersection of two-thirty-fifth and Allison. Part of the traffic control scheme that we're using right now is we are turning that stop sign, basically taking it out of service. That should be done by a law enforcement officer, not just somebody going out there and playing with the signs. It's important that, I think you have that person at that intersection directing traffic. My concern is that without having that deputy and going back to a permanent mounting of that stop sign, that you'd see an increase in the amount of time it takes them to exit. I don't think it would work nearly as fluidly as it does while the deputies are in place.
A yield sign wouldn't do it?
No, I don't think a yield sign would do it because, you know, the good thing about having that human intervention out there is he's watching traffic from both directions for the residents, anybody that's going out there camping or people who have other activities going on the weekend. It's a lot easier for him to keep things moving. I think you'd, you could end up with some of the local residents perhaps being inconvenienced without that individual there to, you know, stop the other traffic wave them through and do that quickly and efficiently.
There was an email from Major Wick a week or two ago referencing that at that two-thirty-fifth, they're just running that stop sign because of the way it's set up, when there's nobody there.
Right. You know, again, I think the traffic direction and human intervention helps keep it safe there and does improve that traffic flow. I'm not sure that you could do it nearly as efficiently or without accidents without it. The one thing that I have noticed is I do get copies of all the accident reports. And I think part of this is credit to the, what they're doing down in their parking lot where a lot of those had occurred. But since we've had the deputies out there, we haven't had any of those accidents in the stop-and-go areas. It's one of those so far, knock wood, so good. That's not to say that when you have that many people moving that minor fender bender isn't going to occur, but I haven't seen them here lately.
The sheriff did mention to me last, or maybe it was Major Wick, I think there's been at least two, maybe three events where right at shift change, a train came through.
Well, that's...
Which shuts down everything going west.
To the east. Yeah. And that's the reason that they changed from the original scheme, which was to take a two-fortieth to Andrew and out. One other thing I wanna share, and this isn't related to the shift change, but Jim and Jim's work with the Ready Mix, we are seeing the vast majority of the Ready Mix trucks now coming in two-thirty-fifth to Andrew to Allison, going in and out that way. My staff has noticed a definite reduction in the number of heavy loads that are proceeding north on Allison. There's still a few, but we are seeing the vast majority of that, especially the Ready Mix trucks utilizing the new route going in and out.
And how are the roads holding up?
We're out working on them this week. This rain and the heavy traffic has been hitting them pretty hard. We went out and bladed them without putting down dust control last week, got the crown back, got them shaped up again. One of the other things we've been working on this week is trying to get some banking, super elevation, as engineers prefer to call it, in the curve on two-fortieth and Andrew, so that outbound traffic has a little better run around that curve. They can do a little better than thirty miles an hour when we get finished with it. This is in preparation for perhaps seal coating, that primary haul route. You know, what we look at is where their heavy hauling is coming right now. That would be a more long-term dust control than what we're doing right now with magnesium chloride.
My neighbor washed his car yesterday, big mistake.
Yeah, it is a little sloppy out there right now, but that's working well for us. We're not having to buy water and haul it to the site so that we can get that road bladed. When things dry up out there, that road is very, very hard, so...
I think it's going quite well. I kinda look forward to the sheriff bringing us up to date, maybe next week.
Yeah, he could really tell you a lot better what the situation has been out there at night and... night, and, you know, from everything I've seen, they've been doing a very good job. And based on the report we heard today from these gentlemen, it is making a difference in the amount of time it takes to get them out of there. Dropping it from over an hour to half an hour is exceptional. It's, you know, their employees and CF's own measures are really making a difference out there.
I want to thank CF for all the cooperation. It's been great. We can fix it, whatever it is. We just got to make sure we all get together and make it happen.
Dennis, can we get the figures of what we've spent so far?
What we spent through the first pay period was $3,453. That includes FICA and IFRS with the overtime. They actually had 10 different deputies take turns going out there through the process. As I'm hearing today, this number of deputies could drop, is what I'm hearing today. So if I prorate that over a month, it'd be $8,632 versus well under the $18,600-some dollars.
And so we're looking at possibly that figure for six months?
Six, if you ran six more months, you'd probably be talking about $50,000 more. And I think the original estimate is around 110, 115. And like I say, this could drop because it sounds like things are going well enough. They may only need one or two deputies out there on each shift. So that's good news, too.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Can I, one more comment? I'd like to thank four people, not only CF and the residents out there and the sheriff's department, but also this board. But with that, I think we have four questions that we need to take up, and not necessarily today. But is this board committed to sustaining this for the next six months? That's one question. Is there a plan in place to do so? Will we continue to routinely revisit this each month to gauge whether it's being successful? I think that's part of what we're doing here today. And then number four is where do the funds ultimately come from? Again, those are not questions that all need to be answered right now, but maybe in coordination with the sheriff's department being here next week and subsequent discussions, I would just challenge us collectively with those four.
And I really might ask the fifth question. Is CF willing to contribute, or do you have anything built into your budget to help offset the cost of this? And maybe that is something that's discussed in another arena, but I don't know if you build those into your budgets.
You know, I understand your request. I would suggest that you formally make a request for assistance from CF. You know, the division of responsibility between Nick and I build the facility and he handles the relationship.
And we've had those discussions.
You have had them?
Yes, we have. Thank you, Jim.
And?
And the county and CF agreed that the county would cover it. That's why the sheriff came in. Next item up for bid, Human Resources. Oh, excuse me, Mike.
Mark, I think that's got to come before the board.
It came before the board, in the form of the sheriff.
That's not my understanding. Is that yours, Jeremy?
Well, my understanding is for this one month, we've done this, which is...
We did it for one month.
But I'm just saying, long-term, that's something I think that we can look at and consider if that's the pleasure of the board for the next six months or whatever that is. And again, that's not something that we need to decide in the next five minutes, you know, through subsequent conversation with the sheriff's department and open dialogue. I just think it's something that we need a plan in place to be able to fund, no matter what we do or to what level. Does everyone...
Yep. Okay, Mike.
I agree.
I'm sorry I'm dragging you out so long.
Mike added Woodbury County Building Services. I'm here to ask the board to award the contract that we opened up last week after comparing apples to apples. We believe the best savings will be with HCI with a savings of $3,474.
What was our total bid, Mike?
Total bid was $11,450 compared to the next highest. The next lowest would have been $14,862.
Move on to bid HCI.
Need a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, we had a conversation just before the board meeting. You want to, since you're going to leave, I hate to drag it to the end of the meeting.
Sorry. I'd like to just bring to everybody's attention, the project of evacuating the grounds, the groundwater, the chemicals, the benzene and all that over there, everybody's familiar with that, correct? Their plan was to put a building out in the back corner and then put pipe going all the way around the building, which they have to tear up the sidewalk all the way back and then put the sidewalk back in. Now, there's a possible problem with the electric getting to the building, so they're looking at two different options. If, what the cost of getting electric to the building in the backside versus possibly moving the building from the back to the front corner, right across the street from the courthouse, and putting it up there, which would save pretty much a lot of money and also possibly speed the process of evacuating the grounds over there by possibly up to a year. And of course, the cost. But another thing that, if we put it to the back, it could possibly mess up our, putting the new sidewalk, our new stairs and stuff in there, because they're going to be tearing up that whole side of the building, which means we're going to have no access to the building, which would mean we'd have to put our stairs way off into the future. So that's just something we're looking at. We want to make sure everybody's aware of kind of what's going on. Nothing's set in stone yet. We're still trying to figure out cost.
We haven't had a report on that yet.
Nope, that's just come up today. It just, we just...
Oh, I'm talking about on their findings, we haven't had a report. There hasn't been a problem.
That's, well, that's actually coming up here pretty quick, June...
Yeah, there's a teleconference about it.
Fourteenth or somewhere in that area.
Well, have they found?
Well, they're suggesting to start this process over there, but nothing's set in stone. It ain't been answered. But all this is just in case, if it is awarded that way, you know, the difference of putting the shed out back or maybe possibly putting it up front and the tearing up of the sidewalk that leads from the front of the LEC all the way to the back. So it's just more for information.
All right. Because the last I knew is there hadn't been, that problem hasn't been exacerbated at all.
As of right now, as far as I know, they're, I want to say, looking at it pretty strongly. And I think it's been to the state and they're going to have this teleconference to make the decision. That's all I know. But what I'm actually trying to bring up now is the possibility of the tearing of the sidewalk up going to the back, if it gets to that point. If it's back there or versus up here, the possibilities of it only being there a year shorter if we possibly put it up front. And the cost to everybody would probably be cheaper by going up front, but we don't, we won't know that until electricians came in today. And so they're trying to figure out what's going to be more economical to get power to that little station. We don't know whether it's going to be cheaper from the front or cheaper from the back.
So you're just giving this as an informational item so that should we come to that decision in the future, it won't be the first time that we've heard about it?
Right, you're at least aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Aren't all the costs covered by the sinking fund down the state even tearing up some, so it's really a matter of where you locate it, but it is not any of cost to us?
Correct. It's my understanding.
Isn't the cost come from us first and then we get reimbursed from the state?
Yeah.
More or less.
We get paid after the fact.
Right, right.
So it's basically how much money we would be putting up front until the innocent land owner's fund would reimburse us?
Right. And what's going to be better for the county in the long run? You know, having that unit sit here for an extra year, say, per se. If we can get it out of here a year sooner, boy, that sure would be great for us.
Well, I can't wait to see what they come back with their findings, because like I say, I did not know that there had been. I've heard it on the radio or I thought in the newspaper.
Right. Well, you know, I've read a lot of different things coming from the state and the contractor going back and forth on this. But either way, it sounds like they're going to want to, they want to make sure they do everything possible. So maybe it'd be great if they didn't, if everything was good and they don't need to, but it's just hard to say which way it's going to go. More for, I guess, just for everybody to know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, back to the regular agenda, Human Resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Need a motion?
Remove the memorandum of personnel transactions?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, Sue Rivers Employment Contract, discussion in action.
I have the contract here. Does anyone need it? It was in the packet. But this is something that was discussed last week and we're just bringing it forward because it wasn't on the agenda for last week.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'll reiterate some comments from last week. I know we were needing to defer on this agenda item because it wasn't properly noticed, but I'm going to disapprove of this job description the same way that I did of the 2080 agreement. I've objected in some ways to the size, scope, and what I feel is unelected region power to not only tax our citizens, but lay claim to our buildings and now, I think, increase oversight and accountability, which only belongs with this board. There's an era, or an air, I should say, of inertia and almost inevitability, as if these things are just happening in and of themselves or happening because we're signing a 2080 agreement. And should we have Woodbury County citizens who feel that the level of customer service or providers that come to us, we will really be relegated to saying, we don't provide the oversight of the performance evaluation. It's conducted annually by an unelected CEO. And so for that reason, I will not be voting for this.
Matthew, you want to say something?
Well, I have plenty to say later about the committee meeting and the 2080 in general, but I see this as kind of a package deal.
Jeremy, I can appreciate what you're saying, but this is how it's all, it's shifting to a region, not a county. We had an excellent mental health program as a county, and hopefully, we have to go to, we have to be in a region, and I think these things are mandated, unless I can be shown otherwise that they're not. So I, you know, in principle, you can vote against it, but it's something you have to do anyway.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Three to two, I believe. Next one up, Sue Rivers' job description and discussion in action. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Can I just ask for a clarification? I received a copy of that 2080 agreement today, and I was testing to signature, but the dates are from 2014. Can you clarify what the 2080, why that's coming and it has a 2014 date? I thought that was an amendment that you did last...
It should have been an amended one, so if the date's 14, it's wrong?
It doesn't say, but it doesn't say amendment. Is that what you looked at, Joshua? Was there an amendment to that?
I think it was characterized as an amendment, but I didn't see a separate document that was an amendment document. It could have been an amendment and restatement of the whole document, but...
It's okay the way it is, just the date.
Well, the copy that I reviewed didn't have 2014 dates. It had current dates.
Maybe it was just in the notarized, on the date that it's set to be received, notarized in 2014. In the document, maybe there is a different date.
Yeah, it's probably just some sort of clerical error that could be corrected with the present date.
All right, thank you.
Can somebody track that down? Okay. All right. I need a motion to a job description. Do we have that already?
We're done.
We already voted on that.
Okay, have we voted?
Yes.
Done deal, okay.
Run 7B.
7B, approval resolution for tax suspensions of BB. Need a motion?
Does someone want to clarify the email connected to this? I'm a little confused on, this person needs to get the house in their name before...
I don't know all the details other than what's listed there in the email from Karen. We were granting a tax suspension to an individual who's now deceased. The estate hasn't been probated, so the suspension went away when she was deceased. Now, one of the heirs is living in the house, but it hasn't been probated. So, and that individual's asking for a new suspension. The potential issue is eventually, as the taxes continue to accumulate...
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay?
Nay.
Can I just ask for a clarification? I received the copy of that 2080 agreement today and I was testing to signature, but the dates are from 2014. Can you clarify what the 2080, why that's coming and it has a 2014 date? I thought that was an amendment that you did last...
Should've been an amended one, so if the date's 14, it's wrong?
It doesn't say, but it doesn't say amendment. Is that what you looked at, Joshua? Was there an amendment to that?
Um, I think it was characterized as an amendment, but I didn't see a separate document that was an amendment document. It could've been an amendment and restatement of the whole document, but...
It's okay the way it is, just the date.
The, the copy that I reviewed didn't have 2014 dates. It had current dates.
Maybe it was just in the notarized, on the date that it's set to be received, notarized, 2014. In the document, maybe there is a different date.
Yeah, it's probably just some sort of clerical error that could be corrected with the present date.
All right, thank you.
Can somebody track that down? Okay. All right, I need a motion to a job description. Do we have that already?
We're done.
We already voted on that.
Okay, have we voted?
Yes.
Yep.
Done deal, okay.
Run seven B.
Seven B, approval resolution for tax suspensions of BB. Need a motion?
Does someone wanna clarify the, the email connected to this? I'm a little confused on, on, um, this person needs to get the, the house in their name before...
I don't know all the details, other than what's listed there in the email from Karen. We were granting a tax suspension to an individual who's now deceased. The estate hasn't been probated, so the, the, uh, the suspension went away when, when she was deceased. Now, one of the heirs is living in the house, but it hasn't been probated. So, and that individual's asking for a new suspension. The potential issue is eventually, as the taxes continue to accumulate, the house won't be marketable if the taxes due against it are, you know, approaching the, the value of the house. And I don't know what the current taxes due are, but that's just a concern that we need to be aware of. But if it's, if it was actually transferred to her name through a probate, then the taxes would have to be paid off that have been suspended up to this date and then they start back at zero and go up again.
So she would need to be re, we would have to re-approve at that point?
It'd have to be the transfer to her name and then she'd have to reapply at that time.
So would your recommendation be that we don't allow it unless there is a transfer to her name with the suspended taxes being paid?
I think that makes the most sense. I don't, I don't know if Karen has more of the background here or not. I, I mean, in order for that to happen, the homeowner is gonna have to come up, or someone's gonna have to come up with those back taxes, and I don't know if that's realistic or not. But I just wanted to raise the issue that potentially down the road, it could be a concern for marketability of this property.
Can we defer on this particular item, or because it's a set item, are we tasked with taking action either way?
No, you could, you could table it to get more information if you wanted to.
I'd like to do so, so that we have a little more background and...
Is that a motion?
That, that would be, yes.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is that to have Joshua look into this, the motion?
Joshua and Karen.
I think it would be...
It's a legal matter, because once it's transferred, then it has to be brought up. Is that correct?
She'd have to reapply for the suspension, the new owner.
Right, but the, then that would trigger the back taxes that have been forgiven to be paid.
Correct. And if, an important thing to know would be to know the value of the house and what the, what the back taxes are that have been suspended. If it's, if the taxes suspended are insignificant compared to the value of the house and we wanna go forward and continue to build up, then it's not a big issue. But like I said, I don't, I don't, I haven't been given that information to this point.
And that's the information I think that we would wanna know. Otherwise, I feel like we're going forward a little bit in the dark.
That's how much has been forgiven?
Yes.
And the, the value of the property at this time, do we know?
Shows forty-eight.
You're saying if, if a suspension isn't granted?
Right.
Okay.
So we have a motion to table this until next week. And a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Approval of resolution tax suspension for KJ.
It's not Karen James, is it?
No.
No.
Sure it's not.
Uh, would take a motion to suspend the taxes.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Okay, gee, we're back to secondary roads.
Um, next item we have is listed as AB on your agenda, and that is the permit to work in the right-of-way and a buried utilities permit for Galen Beckner for a new water line. It's a relocation of an existing water line. They're working with the city of Smithland. It is in the rural area, so they're crossing underneath our road. Uh, this is actually two permits, one to work in the right-of-way, which gives them the ability to, uh, place their hydrant. Uh, the second one is for boring a new water line across our road.
Need a motion?
Will it?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
Uh, the second permit I have is for Wilson Farms, represented by Scout Lausher. This is to allow them to clean the west ditch of Dallas Avenue between 290th and 300th Streets. Uh, this is for improving farm drainage. Uh, we have been out and surveyed it and are providing staking for the project. It does meet secondary road standards and I recommend approval.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay?
Thank you, sir.
I'd remind the board, if I could just take a minute, that there is a Hungry Canyons meeting this Friday. It's in Oakland, Iowa. Hungry Canyons is an organization that has provided us over a couple million dollars at this point in time for, uh, stream control structures and drop inlets to promote soil conservation in the area. Board members are always very welcome at that session. And there, it's worth your time to learn about and get involved with the organization.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, county attorney.
Thanks for the invite. Mr. Taylor actually invited us, so thanks for inviting us and having us appear. Lawan, might as well come on up here. He just wanted us to give a, a status update on where we're at with fine collections. And so I had Lawan come in. She's got a handout to show you kinda where the numbers have been rising. Um, and we hope that we continue that trend. And then she's gonna talk a little bit about the actual program. There's a misperception, or maybe just better, a misunderstanding of what the actual program is. A lot of folks will just refer to it as the CAPS program, and it's really not the CAPS program. Um, the CAPS program is part of fine collections, but when they think of what we do, that word just comes out, 'cause it sounds so good, CAPS program. But that's not the whole gist of it. So I just wanted to make that clear, that we do more than just the CAPS program. That's just part of what we do. So with that, I'll let Lawan take the floor and explain what she just hinted, you guys.
Oh, oh, no, you can't take it away. You gotta put it in front of you.
You got to speak in front of twenty-five minutes.
Hi. Um, as PJ said, the CAPS program is just a part of what we do and these numbers...
It has to be in front of him. Thank you.
And these numbers are, um, just to print out for this last fiscal year of what we've collected. As you can see, the numbers gradually increased. And when we started doing it full-time on March 2nd, there's, is a bigger increase than the previous months, um, 'cause we were able to devote basically a person and a half to just this division that PJ wanted, um, that PJ created. So as you can see, and I know it's not super accurate as far as the average, but as you can see, the first eight months or so, we averaged about ten thousand dollars, a little, ten thousand eight hundred dollars per month in our, what the county attorney's office is able to collect. And in the two months that we were able to have a division where we focused on this, we averaged twenty-one thousand, a little over twenty-one thousand dollars. So I think we're making pretty decent progress. The first month was a struggle. We didn't have software. We didn't have everything in place that we needed. And we were still able to generate, um, some money coming in as far as getting people on board, on track to pay their fines. Of these numbers, forty percent of these totals is what goes into the county general fund. The remainder is, the sixty percent is what the state collects. And as you can see in the handout, these numbers don't include, um, anything that we collect for victim restitution, which is the first thing they apply when somebody pays on their fines. The first thing where the money goes is towards victim restitution, as it should. So these numbers don't reflect anything collected for victim restitution. These numbers don't, um, reflect anything that's collected for jail room and board. And these numbers don't reflect anything that we collect for the city, other than the small, the fifteen dollars per case court costs that we get on a city case. But the rest of the money goes to the city, stays with the city. We don't see any of that. And also, I just wanted you, the other thing, another thing we do in addition to fine collections is we do forfeitures. And we keep track of our forfeiture dollars, and that's not on this sheet, from January 1st. So from January 1st, 2015 to present, we have forfeited forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Um, and right now, we have fifty, a little over fifty-one hundred dollars as pending forfeiture money that has been filed on, but hasn't been forfeited yet. As far as, we basically break what we do down to two separate categories. One is the CAPS. And that's the county attorney's license reinstatement program. And that's where people come in, if they need to get their license and they have delinquent fines that are suspending their license. We can put them on a payment plan, assist with having them pay off their civil penalty. And before they're, they've paid off their fine in full, if they are on a payment plan with us, they're eligible to get their driver's license back so that they can drive and go to their job or whatever it is that they need to do. And as of today, we have about forty people, forty payment plans on the CAPS. Um, we've also extended Plymouth County the professional courtesy of not taking anything away that they've already started working on, because prior test, starting on March 2nd, Plymouth County was doing the CAPS program on our cases. We've notified them that as of March 2nd, they are not, that we are doing now and they can't have our cases. But anything that they've started prior to that, they, we, we'd let them keep, 'cause they did all the work on it. So that should be coming to an end pretty soon. They shouldn't have too many more cases that are coming out of Plymouth County. The CAPS program is a little easier for us to enforce, because if they're not paying on it, we can, um, take away their driver's license again. So it's easier to check and most people are compliant with that. The disadvantage to the CAPS program is about a half to two-thirds of those cases are city cases. So we're not generating as much on the CAPS program, the one program that we're able to really enforce as of now. So we've kinda thrown out ideas and ways of working with the city to figure something out where we're getting something in return. But they're just, right now, there just isn't, we haven't come up with a plan. So initially, when we first started, we weren't gonna collect on city cases, but if we didn't do that, there's no way people are gonna get their license back, 'cause they'd have to pay those fines in full and then get on a payment plan with us. So we are doing all city cases as well. We have, um, worked with the Department of Corrections, gotten them on board as far as we're doing this now. So anybody that you have on probation, send over. We can get them on a payment plan while we know where they're at, while we can still find them. So they have been very cooperative and have been working with us with that. We've worked with the police department to get, if they have money in their property system. People are, have, money has been seized and we can't forfeit that money. If they have delinquent fines, we can do garnishments on it. So far, we've done two successful garnishments since we started, one for about three thousand dollars and one for a little over fifty-one hundred dollars. And on that fifty-one hundred dollars that we garnished, about twenty-two hundred of that went towards, um, jail room and board fees that were delinquent. So we're, we're bringing some money to jail. Sheriff Drew and Major Stalman have been very helpful, um, as far as working with us on inmates that have been arrested. We have pending about a thousand dollars in garnishments of money that, um, was seized up at the jail when people get arrested. So we, we're working with the various agencies. Um, the public defender's office is aware that this is what we're doing and they're passing out our applications, um, working with their client to get fines paid off. The courts, court attendants, the clerk's office, and also they also have applications. And we were able to get our application online, so that people can get on and print those off, so they can get started and get on a payment plan with us. So that's been very helpful. We, it saves us in having to mail out, um, applications. We, uh, weren't really sure, we didn't set limits or amounts when we first started. But since we, Mary went to a training, uh, in early May and we've worked with a lot of other counties, um, and we've kinda discovered that we're really kinda letting people off a little easy as far as getting on payment plans with us. So we've kinda set minimums as far as, um, what they need to pay if they're gonna, if we're gonna lift the registration or put them on a CAPS program. This fifty dollar a month payment on a twenty thousand dollar fine is not gonna work. So we're, what we're trying to do is keep them within a five-year period. Set up, set an amount where they can get these fines realistically paid off in about five years. So that's our goal. There's obviously exceptions and we're trying to work with people and, um, get all that going. We are, us and Potawatomi County are the only two counties that will do CAPS for out-of-state driver's license, because you can't enforce it. It's very difficult to enforce. Once we, they get their driver's license in Nebraska, we can't revoke them if they don't pay. You know, there's nothing we can do. So we are making them pay basically half of their fines upfront, a significant amount, before we will help them reinstate their out-of-state driver's license. Um, so up currently, we have about forty people on the CAPS, um, payment plan and almost a hundred and twenty people on the regular payment plans. Um, just about everybody that's on a CAPS payment plan is also on a regular payment plan, 'cause they have fines that don't qualify for the CAPS payment plan. So they're, we're running two payment plans with everyone. We've processed a lot more applications than this. Uh, sometimes people sign up, they don't show up, but we're, um, we're just, we're, we're trying to work with everybody. And, uh, we send out over fifty letters a week, 'cause the clerk's office does have a option where we can see which cases come up that we're eligible to collect on. They have to be ninety days past due. They can't have any current involvement with the central collection unit. Those are the cases that we're eligible to collect on. And we get a daily list from the clerk's office of which cases have become available. So on those cases, when we have time, we send out letters to people, basically reminding them, hey, this is how much you have in fines. You need to get going on a payment plan. At some point, um, if we get more staff and we're able to have the manpower to do it, we would be looking at wage garnishments. If these people have jobs, we can come after their wages, um, to get them paid, to get their fines paid. And contempt of court is always an option, too. That's something that we will look at sometime down the road. So, um, that's, that's where we're at.
Uh, CAPS is situated just down the hall, right?
Everything is down the hall. That's our whole, forfeitures, fine collections, garnishments, that's our whole.
When I was looking at the operation, some comments were made about, uh, the potential security, I guess, possible hazards of just the entryway, how it goes into, uh, you know, to clerks in that area. Are there, is there a need there as, as far as a window was mentioned?
That's one of the things that we've talked about and it's ongoing. I've talked with Mike, Mike, Lawan and I have talked about some things. I've mentioned it to Ed Gilliland, um, a little bit. What we kinda wanted to do is, and Lawan agreed, because I really put it on, the onus on her, as long as she felt safe down there, we would proceed. What we would like to do is make sure that what we're doing is correct and we're gonna make money. Because it's a lot easier for us to show that we're making money and come back to you guys and say, we need ABC. That was our thought process. Yes, we're, we're gonna need to upgrade that office in some form or fashion. And we have some ideas about that. Um, but basically what we're trying to do now is get this up and running, make sure it's working, make sure we're gonna make money. But to answer your question, yes, we're, we're gonna need that. To follow up, Jeremy had asked about some concerns or suggestions, that type of thing. And I had mentioned before, we're gonna come back possibly another month yet and say, we're gonna need that other staff member. We could do it today, we're not ready to do it today. But it's gonna be within thirty days, most likely, that we're gonna come back and say, remember that staff member that I gave you an estimate of cost roughly twenty-two thousand dollars or so before? We're gonna need that person, 'cause I think we're there. The next part to institute is the enforcement factor. When these people aren't paying, what are we gonna do? And we briefly touched bases with the judges, um, but, and they've asked us to come back once we get to that point, but we're close. So that, that's kinda where we're at.
And I just think in addition to the generating funds, extra funds for the county, we're really helping a lot of people. I mean, they're driving legally, they're getting their license back, whereas these people have fines that they're never gonna... I mean, if they had to go pay it off today before they can get their license, they're just not gonna be able to do it. And they're just out driving, racking up more fines. So it's a program that is really, I think, beneficial to the county as far as generating income, but it also helps a lot of people get their registration and drive legally and, you know, get them back on track and get them out of the hole. So I think it's a good, a really good thing.
And one thing before you talk there, I wanna make sure, when people talk about license, sometimes these clients, and I call them clients, but people who owe money, they don't really understand the difference between the license plate issue, because if they have undue paid fines, their license plates get suspended as well. So they may not only have their license to drive suspended, but their license plates to even work the vehicle could get suspended. And so that's where that CAPS program, some people, when they hear that word license, they think CAPS incorporates all of that, but it doesn't. The CAPS just incorporates the driver's license piece of it. So I just, if you guys hear that and they talk about license, you gotta ask, which one are you talking about? You're talking about both or just one or the other, so...
How do you get your license plate back?
We get them on a payment plan and then we call over and say, hey, okay, you can get them.
Okay.
We let the hold.
Well, it is, what I was gonna say, it's just nice to hear a human side of a story, not always numbers. So I'm glad it's doing some good in the community, too.
Most people that we deal with are very appreciative. Um, you know, obviously, some are not happy with the amounts they have to pay or the fact that they have to pay their fines at all. But a lot of the people that we have dealt with, right now, we're really dealing with more people who are coming in and asking us for help. So we haven't done the contempt of court. That's, that's where security will be more of an issue. Those people are gonna be very unhappy with us when warrants start getting issued for their arrest. But right now, we're dealing with mostly people that are coming in wanting help and wanting to get on a plan and wanting to be able to just get their life back on track. And so, you know...
Thank you both very much.
Thank you both very much for all that you're doing with them. I think it's great.
Thanks for the invite, Jeremy.
She does have a really nice looking tree.
Uh, no, we, Luana and I talked about that door and, uh, little curve around there. Have you taken that any further or are you just waiting on everything?
Um, we have now, since it's so inefficient for us to have to get up and open the door every time someone comes to. We have now just propped the door open so that people can just, I know it's not the same saying, but we can't get anything down if we're getting up every five minutes, opening a door and standing in the door, are we talking to people? So we just leave it open. We have courthouse security. I trust they're doing what they need to so that nobody can come down. So we have the emergency button in place and we have the one that we can call, so we are just.
If you're comfortable with it.
We're just letting them come right in and dealing with it that way. So it has not been a problem yet. But at some point, I think as we go forward with the enforcement, we might not be as comfortable doing that.
I can believe that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, number ten. Excuse me.
Statement here. On the budget side of it, we did not budget any money for next year's collections because at the point in time they're starting, this is very new, very unsure how much was coming in. Hopefully by next budget cycle, we might bill something, budget something. But for this coming year, this is new, unanticipated revenue, we'll just have to kind of keep track of it. They work together well.
So what you're saying is they're gonna have to give you an estimate?
Eventually. And we can keep track for the current year, this year, what they're collecting, next year, what's collecting. We set up a separate lineup, keep track of it so we know.
But we did budget the expenditure side?
Yes. Yes, we did.
But no revenue?
No revenue.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Uh, next up, Ms., excuse me, Mr. Butler.
Okay. Well, I'm coming to the board now. When we had McClure Engineering, we contracted McClure Engineering on contract number one, that's how I refer to it. Contract number one is the first one where we had a contract to do a master planning preliminary engineering agreement for professional services. In that contract, we did contract for fifty-four thousand, um, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. We have paid all of that. The next issue is on that first contract, we did budget seventy-seven hundred and that was an estimate. And when we got the bill, the bill came for fifteen thousand some odd dollars, which is a combination of contract number one and contract number two. I said I need to split down so I can come back to the board and give you what it is for contract one. So let's start with contract one, there's seventy-seven hundred. We did not obligate any money for that because we weren't sure if they're even gonna spend or have the meetings. And when they did send the bill, he did write on the letter, the estimates for fif- fifty hours for seventy-seven hundred, he actually put in seventy-three hours, which is twenty-three hours above what they estimated was gonna be the cost. Obviously, if he's done the work, he's gonna have to eat it or we're gonna have to pay for it.
That's in last year?
Yes, contract number one. Contract number two is the one we just agreed to, which is kind of, it's an open end contract per on-call basis. When we did this, we did not say where we're gonna pay this from. I'm assuming, that's why I put in my motion, suggested motion, that we pay on contract one and contract two out of local option and sales tax once we figure out what the bill is and how much it is. And if the board agrees to go above the seventy-seven hundred that we agreed to in the original contract. Again, that was an estimate, but it went twenty-three hours longer than the fifty hours they estimated. So once we get the final bill, we can figure it out. But right now, we do have a bill that's itemized for nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars on a new contract. So I guess what I'm asking for when I put this on the agenda was a motion by, by first, second by second, to pay for service rendered by McClure Engineering contract number one and number two from lost funds. Now, it's gonna be hard to put an estimate in there, but, you know, I can figure out what the bills are now and put in some numbers so we do have something obligated for future costs with McClure. So we don't, you know, obligate all the lost funds and end up with nothing, so we can't pay it. You need to put something down and I'm suggesting for now twenty-five thousand to cover contract one and two. If we need more, we gotta come back to the board.
I have a question. I mean, this is a memory refresher, I guess. Um, when did we as the owner ever, um, approve of the additional hours? Because on part four, four point one, it says additional meetings, consultations with governmental agencies, um, that it had to come back and be approved by us. Did we do that? I, I don't remember. That's why it's a surprise that there were extra meetings. Now, we may have, and, and maybe my memory is leaving me, but I don't, didn't, wasn't McClure or was someone? I don't know exactly if it would be us as the owner. But at some point in time, when did we know that we were contracting for the extra meetings? Does anyone remember?
I believe we approved on a.
Oh, this would have been last year.
Right. I mean, all of a sudden, there's a charge for the extra meetings, but I don't know when the regular work stopped and the extra meetings kicked in.
I don't either.
The extra meetings.
That's the only thing that, so was the, where does that responsibility come just going in the future if we ever have a, uh, you know, a different kind of a contract with a consultant?
It's hard to change the past, but it really doesn't define who the owner is. We're assuming the owner would be the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors. No, he did say some, sometimes in some meetings we had, that he had to roll out the plan, so he wanted to visit each community. But he never did come back and say how many hours he spent until we get the final bill, which exceeded seventy-seven hundred by twenty-three hours. Now, when we get the new bill, I told him we need to broke down between the contract one, contract two. There may be a difference hours because we had, once when he billed us a little bit too much, he came back and just ate it. That's up to Terry and McClure Engineering, what they want to do there. All I need to know is when it does come, we will bring the board, you know, the claim forward to the board to look at. You all look at it and then we'll pay it.
I think the only question here is, you got a bill for nine hundred and some?
Yep, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and I have one for fifteen thousand.
That's an estimate.
Well, that's an actual bill. Problem is, he combined the contract one and contract two, all in one bill. So there's no way identified and Terry is gonna break it down.
So we can't really deal with that until we find out?
That one we can't deal with right now, we'll have to deal with later, but the nine ninety-nine is part of the new contract. And it does break it down by meetings. When you get your edit, you'll have it and if you want to look at the actual itemized, you can see where the meetings were, what date and with who. He's broken it down pretty fine.
Well, I think there's a lesson here that, you know, you can rack up these costs very quickly, very quickly. I mean, I don't even know how we, we racked up all these other ones after the initial contract and when we said to roll out. So I think having an open-ended contract and i- is a dangerous way to do county business, actually.
He bills by the quarter hour. And the reason I say that, I made a phone call asking when we're working on the Dogwood Trail, talked to him for quarter of an hour, there's a bill. So anytime we pick up the phone, and it's true with attorneys, anybody you talk to, when you pick the phone up, they answer it. Unless they're gracious out of their heart, they're billing.
Well, I don't think twenty-five thousand is a good number. I think we should not do that tonight.
Okay.
And take a look at it, but we can approve the nine hundred and something.
Yes.
That's what I want to get to. I think the actual approval of that claim is a separate issue, isn't it? What you're talking about here is just designate where the funds should come from.
Where the funds should come from, local option, sales tax, law recommending.
When the claim comes, that's when you can have, you can review it, you can have Joshua review it, see if, you know, if you have any recourse. But right now, you're just talking about where you're gonna pay it from. When the claim comes, that's the time to raise those issues.
So we have nine hundred and ninety-some dollar claim?
Yep. That will send through.
We could do a motion to pay that claim through lost.
Correct. And that claim will come forward next week through your regular claim process. The other fifteen, we'll get a breakdown.
He's, what he's asking for now is just where he's going to expense the claims from.
The nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Should we approve the claims? Correct.
Pardon?
Should we approve the claims?
That's correct. Right now, he's just asking where the fund should take it from.
Correct.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Um, yes.
I think you do.
All right, need a motion?
I would move to pay for services rendered by McClure Engineering per contract number one and contract number two from lost funds.
Need a second? I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Claussen?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Oh?
Aye.
Mattson?
Aye. Okay.
Then we get the breakdown, the other, I'll be back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Glazer?
Good evening. Uh, David Glazer, Rural Economic Development. Before I start, in the board packet, I sent you all some information on the materials that I wanted you to review and ask approval for. There was a typo, um, in the amortization schedule. The math was right when you got into the, to the payment due date, but where list the first payment due, it was wrong. So I just want to give you a small and updated copy. Premature. These closing documents, um, are for, um, the Sergeant Bluff Eye Care Facility project and Sergeant Bluff with Dr. Ben Yule. The board approved the closing documents back in December, uh, but since then, uh, we've needed to make some revisions to the closing documents. One in particular because, um, his original articles of incorporation that he submitted, uh, to Southern Economic Development Corporation. Um, he had a business partner and that relationship is no longer existing, so he is the sole owner of the business. So we had to amend, uh, the corporate guarantee and some other places where his signature was required. Um, and then what we also did, um, is we had, um, added an amendment to the loan and servicing agreement. And this is the same thing that we did on the last, um, uh, revolving loan fund, uh, that we approved for the Countryman Project in Mowville. Uh, we added some language on the last, um, section before the signatures, uh, with regards to confidentiality. Um, and essentially stating that Woodbury County would, um, keep, uh, certain business financial, um, documents confidential to the fullest extent allowed by law. So us being subject to, uh, public, um, uh, open records requests, um, we just wanted to make sure that language is spelled out in there clearly and the applicants realize that. And other than that, that's it.
So this is a revision of what we approved earlier?
Correct.
And those are relatively minor?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Need a motion?
Move to approve the revised closing documents for Sergeant Bluff Eye Care as presented.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir.
Now, this is when, Mr. Glazer, you asked about getting the check, uh, from our office directly.
Yes, um, you know, we're working out the process in terms of the closing date because the last, uh, t- the last one that I did, I put the closing date is the date of the signature that was signed. Um, it really needs to be the date that the borrower receives the money.
Oh.
And so what I've been doing, um, is, and Pat, I don't know if, if you want me to request a policy change in terms of how the checks are, uh, you know, when they're processed. Uh, because what is, what has happened is, um, I'll submit a claim for, you know, I'll get the board's approval for the closing documents and then I'll, uh, submit the claim for a check to be cut the following week. Um, it goes to the board for approval on Tuesday and then checks are cut on Wednesday. And, um, in most of these cases, the funding is needed to close on the other lo- on the loan with their bank. Um, and so the pros, I think the policy is that the checks are cut, then they're mailed. But, um, folks are wanting to come in and get the money or, you know, have immediate access to the check once it's cut.
Years ago, according to, uh, just for internal controls we've brought to the board and you approved. And it's not really a county policy, it's the county auditor's office policy is that we, uh, mail checks directly. We don't, uh, give them to folks to come in to pick up. That's an internal control. That's what they do it for, but we hadn't, we make exceptions, um, land deals and that sort of thing. When folks want the, uh, checks, the proceeds right away so that they can take it to the, the real estate closing to get that done. And that's the way we handle those and we've done that forever.
So this is, uh, one of the exceptions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Just on the vote related to that, Mr. Taylor abstained and I just ask if he could state the reason for the abstention?
Sure. The applicant was a contributor to my campaign and I felt it would be a conflict of interest to possibly vote on it.
Thank you. And the reason that, um, I asked that would be of record is based on the, uh, bylaws that the board, uh, approved. Um, if there's, if it's a conflict of interest, uh, then the vote is calculated without, um, calculating for that supervisor, that abstain. So in other words, this is a four, four zero vote, um, with the abstention. If it's an abstention for a reason other than a conflict of interest, then it's essentially a no vote and is treated as a no vote. So that's why supervisors, when they abstain, should state the reason for the abstention. Thank you.
Point well taken.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. Uh, last item on Board of Supervisors, approval of new vision statement for Woodbury County. Jeremy?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Gilliland, uh, who could not be with us tonight, had, had brought forward, uh, a reapproval of a, a previous vision statement, um, one that I understand has been in effect for, uh, at least a couple of decades. And so in looking to, uh, the, the direction that I think, um, we would like to hopefully go in, I, I have crafted a, a revision to the vision statement and I'll, I'll just read it. And it says this, "By committing to excellence and reaching new heights in continued process improvement, Woodbury County will provide outstanding customer service in order to enhance the quality of life. Woodbury County upholds the public trust and is a careful steward of taxpayer dollars, natural resources and our historic heritage. And through both leadership and cooperation, we pursue opportunities for our county to grow. So Woodbury County is the best place to visit and in which to live, work and raise a family." And, and that's what I'd like to put forward and, and one of the reasons is that I think it touches all of our departments, all of the different services that we provide, whether it's, um, grading a road out there or, um, our conservation efforts, uh, touching natural resources or even the building in which we are in, um, and its historic heritage. I think we, um, ought to and, and do commit to being good stewards of public trust and taxpayer dollars. But from an economic development standpoint, as long as we have our rural economic development director here, we also want to pursue opportunities, um, for our county to grow and enhance the quality of life. And so I think this, um, continues a- across all departments and, um, is all encompassing in that sense. And so that's what I would, I would put forward as a vision statement.
Discussion?
The vision statement you refer to was drafted by all five supervisors. This might be an excellent vision statement, but it's only has one author. If we're going to redo the vision statement, it should be redone by the board. And, uh, we can set up, you know, a session to do that or a special session to do that.
I don't necessarily disagree with what Supervisor Claussen has said. I know, um, in my training, when I worked in school improvement, the power of the vision statement was when everyone contributed to it. And that it should be a part of maybe even beyond supervisors, um, getting input even from our department heads. And maybe they in turn, even from, uh, the people that work for them. You know, what happens to vision statements are they get put on a shelf, they get dusty. And it's even more likely to happen if there's not, um, somewhat of a, a process and, and sometimes it can be too lengthy. But, you know, enough time should be devoted to it that it actually has meaning for everyone in the organization. That's just, you know, some of what I learned. And actually, uh, the training was at Stanford University for about four different summers. And actually, the training was at Stanford University for about four different summers. And I led school improvement and, and I don't, it's been a while back, but I don't think the theory has changed in that. So while I applaud your efforts to bring it forward again and it's probably time to look at it, I think we would lose something by just approving it quickly without involving more people.
Did you involve Ed at all, did he have any input?
The only thing Ed had talked about is the continued process improvement, that we continue to grow and, and improve. And I, I think that speaks to reaching new heights and, and just to, to sort of show you where I'm coming from that, you know, the, the idea of committing to outstanding customer service is something I think we'd all agree on. The public trust that we withhold and then, or not withhold, but uphold. And then also making sure that everything that we do enhances the quality of life for our citizens. I'd certainly be willing to take amendments to it or other suggestions or ideas.
You misunderstood me. The whole thing offends me. If it's done by one supervisor, you know, where did you get the authority? I don't even know, it came on the agenda.
You submitted an agenda item?
Well, for discussion and action, no. It's not for discussion, it's for discussion and action. It just, you, you just can't do a vision statement by yourself and expect the board, you know, to just okay it. I think it's gotta be, there has to be input from everybody on the board. There is no spirit of cooperation on this board, there hasn't been for quite some time now. But, you know, this is going too far, in my opinion.
Well, it was certainly not to me a contentious item to offend you, Mr. Clausen, or to, to bring up the, the nature of, I mean, that's, maybe that's why we need the vision statement is to say that we will cooperate and.
Saying it and doing it are two different things.
I understand. I, I would say this, I'm, I'm willing to defer for a week and to, to take other board member suggestions if you would say that you would want to strike something or you would want to add something in.
No, I'm not playing that game. If we want to come up with a new vision statement, it should be the five of us coming up with it.
So we're having an open discussion right now?
Right.
And do you have suggestions, do you have ideas, would you want to put something forward?
At this time, no.
Would you want to wait a week and do that in a week?
I'd want a meeting of the five members of this board to come up with a vision statement. If they come up with the same wording, I don't have a problem with it.
Would next Tuesday at 4:30?
To do it this way, it just is not right.
Would next Tuesday? Would next, well, thank you for telling me what I realized, but next Tuesday at 4:30 work?
You want to have a meeting then?
I think we have one scheduled. I mean, I'm willing to entertain other ideas, Mr. Clausen, but I, I would need to know and I'm willing to defer to next week if you have input or other ideas and completely amenable.
See, once again, you're missing the point.
Tell me, tell me what you would like, you would like a special meeting?
I would like this board to act as a board for a change. And this is a vision statement for Woodbury County that everyone on this board should have input into. Not to amend your version. If I come in with another, a completely different version and say to you, well, I'll accept amendments and I'll give you a week to do it in, that just doesn't work.
So just to understand, we'll, you would like to come to a meeting? We didn't, we just start all with a blank slate and we start discussing?
That's correct.
Have you been a part of that, have you done that kind of visioning process before? Some of the groups I've been in, we've had facilitators and we have started very generic. And they were able to pull us together as a group. And come on, and they're, believe you me, the larger the group, the, the more ideas on, on the vision. But someone skilled actually can pull a group together and come up with something that fits everyone. And then really, truly, the benefit of doing it that way is that there is buy-in, you do all pull in the same direction. It's just, it is more of a spirit of cooperation. It, it is, and it, and it guides an entire organization. And it, and even if we slow it down, it will allow buy-in, you know, our, our, I think the people who really are going to live this vision statement are our employees. And that's going to be driven by us, but more importantly, by the department heads. They should be included in this, they, they should be in the room. And I'm even going beyond what probably Supervisor Clausen believes, but I believe it will be stronger and it might actually have some meaning and it won't be stuck in a, on a shelf. Honestly, this was, I had to go look up. I said, where, thank goodness Karen knew where it was and she found it and I said, what's the old ones say? Because oftentimes, that's what happens, they just don't have meaning. So if we're really serious about looking at organization and organizational change, you can't slam dunk it, it can't be quick, you can't force it.
I would suggest we table this, figure out what to do with it.
I think we should do some, I think it's a good idea to do something with it.
Well, I do too, I mean, we, we, we passed one that's been passed the last 22 years. I don't think it's reflective of the board at this time.
I don't know whether it is or not, but I do know it was facilitated, I believe Deb Burney was a facilitator in it.
I'd take a motion.
It wasn't 22, I've only been here 18, don't make me any older than I am. I just turned 60 and I'm concerned about that.
Are you 60? Sorry.
You turned 60 again?
So old.
So I'd, I'd, do you want a, a motion to table to next week? And then I'd like to have?
Just table.
Well, I'd like to ask for it to, to reappear next week and we can start the working discussion and.
Let's just table it for now, please.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Need a second? I'll second.
In a spirit of cooperation, how's that?
Do, honestly, to table just means to postpone. And you're postponing indefinitely at this point, you have not stated a particular time.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Okay, we go into recess for the Orton Slough Drainage District Trustees Meeting need Mr. Nara.
Drainage district, but this just never goes away. And I'll be coming at you with some more stuff next week too, so spoiler alert. The item we have today is simply a contract for the Orton Slough inland repairs that we took quotations for last week. And I recommend approval of the contract for $32,250 for repairs to the Orton Slough tile line.
Need a motion?
Move approval of the contract.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Thank you very much.
Incredible. Okay, need to adjourn the Orton Slough District Trustee Meeting.
Move to adjourn. The Orton Slough Drainage District Trustee Meeting.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Reports on committee meetings? Anyone?
Me. Munson and I went to the monthly Sioux Rivers Regional Mental Health and Disability Services Governance Board Meeting today in Lamar's. A little background, last Tuesday, I was not happy with abdicating tax authority to the region. I asked the county attorney's office for their take on it and heard back from Mr. Widman Friday, which is why there's nothing in your agenda, but I'll try to cover it as well as I can and jump in if I mess anything up, Josh, and at the end as well. Basically, there is, there is nothing in Iowa code, according to the county attorney's office, that allows what the governance board has done and that we have unfortunately blessed them to do, along with two other counties. It is kind of in their hands, but I think it bears explaining to this board and to the public. I see this as a fundamental issue of taxation without representation and I did not want to be dramatic, which is why I asked for the county attorney's opinion. And while it's not a final opinion, it's, there are quote, "causes for concern." With the amended 2080, the following language in Section 7.1, which says, "And said governing boards shall determine the amount of mental health dollars levied by individual counties on behalf of the region." I reiterated to the region and to you all that I have no problem with the mental health region and service delivery, its employees, the existing 2080 or even the amended, except for this point. There's cause for concerns for two reasons. The power to levy a tax is not inherent, it is given to levying bodies by the legislature. Without that power, there is no power to levy. According to Iowa Code 331, 424A, 4 and 6, the local boards of supervisors are the levying body. Secondly, there are instances where you can contort this into having a certifying board do the levying via statute, but they cannot also be the levying board, they would be the certifying board. They would be held, public hearings pursuant to Chapter 24, where public may be heard, which is not currently allowed for in the, in the regions' meetings. However, pursuant to Iowa code, the same Iowa code, the county is both the certifying board and the levying board. Quote, "For each fiscal year, the county shall certify levy for payment of services." And I'm going to continue on with this, bear with me and then I'll cover the response I got. I mentioned that I totally realize that regardless, because of the state cap, our mental health taxes levied, the maximum legally allowed would be the same. And for that reason, I don't understand the urgency to change the mechanism. It's the long-term consequences we as supervisors are elected to foresee. This sets a precedent that could later allow counties to set levies in other counties without support from a single elected official of the other county. That's not working together and that's not cooperation, all it does is violate county home rule. It's clear that there's a movement to regionalization in service delivery, but the legislature has retained the taxing authority within the individual counties to balance the power that has been given to the region. As inexperienced, the new as I am, I, I don't think it's, and perhaps naive, but it's inconceivable to me that we could abdicate taxing authority without being expressly permitted by state law, which it is not. There were state law, Senate File 463, signed into law April 2015, which relate to clarification of the region. The only mention in state law this year for mental health redesign concerns eligibility for risk pool dollars. And it specifically says the counties compromised comprising the Mental Health and Disability Services Region, each levied the maximum amount for the fiscal year of application for risk pool assistance. In order to get that assistance, the counties had to levy it, the max, not the region. In the past, Munson and I asked the governance board to delay to address our concerns as a county as related to human resources, language. All the counties in the region ended up being in agreement. We did not get an extension on the financing language and that has created this conundrum, I believe. It's, I've heard it said that other regions are moving towards this. The CEO of the region has repeatedly mentioned that this is the way things are going. I personally called three of our neighboring regions myself and I found that not to be the case. Joshua informed me that he has spent some time on the Secretary of State's website looking at 2080s of other several regions in Iowa and has not found that to be the case either. In fact, one of them expressly said that the individual counties would levy the taxes. I caution the governance board that they are set to make a mistake called taxation without representation. This is where it gets a little weird for me. Everyone agreed. Everyone said it was a good point to bring up. They, the CEO said he would never argue with what I just said. The chairman said that if it came, if it came to litigation, then my case would, would win. And then other, other supervisors said, of course, we don't have the power to levy. And so I said, but it says in our amended 2080 that the governing board shall determine. And from there, we got into weirder waters where they all said that basically we have a gentleman's agreement, which was, which was good for the short term because again, I don't have any short-term concerns with this because we're all going to levy the max as counties anyway. But it's the long-term concern where counties can levy in other counties when we're all gone and when the cap is able to be raised and one county disagrees and things like that. But anyway, this gentleman's agreement was mentioned that we all understand that, quote, "And said governing board shall determine the amount of mental health dollars levied by individual counties on behalf of the region" actually means, "And said governing board shall recommend." So.
Which they all agreed to.
Which they all agreed to. I, of course, recommended that we change the 2080 to what we believe it says so that when other supervisors come into our spots later, they don't read this 2080 and say, "This lets me determine the taxes." Again, there's no short-term concern, but it sets in my mind a very bad and sloppy precedent for the future when mental health, when the legislature actually addresses this. And, and I don't think they need to address specifically this funding mechanism for us to know what's right right now because Iowa Code 331, 424A, says the county is both the certifying board and the levying board. And that is spelled out in code already. There doesn't need to be any more clarification of that. As far as the remedy, there is none right now because the governing board did agree, I think, to take up this revision the next time there's something more important to address with the 2080 down the road. But as a county, because we sent it on, and I would point out, a couple of weeks ago I asked us not to, but we sent it on and there's no provision in Iowa code for what we did. So we can't really impact any of that, it has to come from the governance board.
Well, the other frustrating thing is we were told over and over, well, this is what all the counties are doing.
Exactly.
And now we're finding out that's absolutely not true.
We, we did a little investigative work ourselves and did some legwork and called these supervisors in these different regions and we, we found out anything from, what are you crazy? We would, we would never do that to, no, we haven't even discussed it yet, or no, we're never going to discuss it, or, you know, that sounds preposterous. So as far as I know, we're the only county, we're the only region that has decided to go so far above and beyond to actually give the levying power, at least according to the documentation, to the region. And I think it, I, I couldn't disapprove of it more. But I was the, I, I felt like the only one in the room that really wanted to get at it now. We do have a year until the next, you know, demand for taxation comes in and, and so I do hope we correct it by that time, but, but I just want to, you know, point out this was a very valid concern last week that Supervisor Taylor and I raised and has the backing of our county attorney's office.
Anyone else?
Well, and just to address what Matt said, as he did mention, we haven't issued a formal opinion on that. I kind of gave him my preliminary thoughts on it. I, I think the code is clear that the county, each county is the certifying body and the levying body. And my concern is that the 2080 doesn't provide a process for a public hearing before the 2080 governance board, before they determine the amount of the levy. And then if it comes back to the county and the county's going to have our public hearing for the budget process, but if we're saying our hands are bound by the governance board, then that essentially leaves the taxpayer without a chance to be heard regarding the proper amount of levy. And it's, I, I don't think there's any other example of that anywhere. And it's, I, I don't think there's any other example of that anywhere. We have a lot of different types of boards and different taxing setups and structures, but either a public hearing is provided for at the certifying board or at the levying board if it hasn't been done in the prior process. But that's, that's not the case that we have under this current setup of the 2080.
And this idea, Josh, that the legislature made us do it simply isn't there. I mean, nowhere in Iowa code is it mandating that every region's governance board set the levy, correct? I mean, I haven't seen that. Okay. I just want to, because that statement's been made again and again. I'm glad we have third-party validation that that's just not true. So, thank you.
There's also the little issue of the budgeting timeframe. The counties are bound by state law to, to have their budgets done March 15th and the governance board operates on a deadline of April 15th. So if they have legal authority to set the levy, that doesn't make sense because we have to set our levy before they, they give us the levy that they say is more binding than ours. But we're going by state law and, in my opinion, that's what we have to go by, whether or not their, the 2080 says this or that. But the good news is there is that gentleman's agreement that, that...